Sunday. However, DMH limits tour flights to Monday through Saturday from nine AM to seven PM, and does not permit tour flights at all on Sundays. From October 2021 to October 2022, East 34th Street heliport handled 6,507 flights, and DMH handled 23,499 flights. EDC is committed to being good stewards of the city's heliport assets. We support innovation across this sector while ensuring New Yorkers' quality of life and safety remain top of mind. In our role as stewards, for example, we work to promote more rapid adoption of electric helicopters, which are quieter and greener. Our team regularly meets with organizations that are advancing these technologies to understand the current technological landscape and how EDC can incentivize quicker adoption. As you may have seen in recent news reports, startup helicopter manufacturers are partnering with established air carriers to introduce new shuttle service from our heliports to local airports on quiet and green electric helicopters. Our understanding per conversations with the industry is that these electric helicopters could be available for commercial use within five years. In addition, we are looking to better leverage our heliport assets by diversifying uses. For example, we are committed to the Blue Highway by introducing marine freight at heliports, which will reduce polluting truck trips from the outer boroughs into Manhattan. We are working with companies that are actively piloting waterborne freight concepts in Hunts Point in the Bronx, and in Sunset Park and Red Hook in Brooklyn. We are pleased to have recently been awarded a $5.1 million federal grant to advance infrastructure improvements at up to six marine landings, including DMH, to support this waterborne freight network. New York City will be the first US city to introduce last mile waterborne freight delivery, and we are excited to work with you to implement this groundbreaking vision. Against the backdrop of these benefits, we recognize that members of our community have raised quality of life concerns about helicopter uses. We have always sought to address these concerns with a spirit of transparency, collaboration, and partnership with the council. In 2016, for example, we worked with the city council, the DMH operator, tour flight companies, and the Federal Aviation Administration to creatively reduce the number of tour flights operating out of DMH from 60,000 flights per year to 30,000 flights, a 50% reduction. Additionally, we eliminated one of the tour routes that flew over a section of northern Manhattan and the Bronx. And tour helicopters are no longer permitted to fly over land and must at all times fly over the water. Moreover, we banned tour helicopters that do not have doors, and tour flights are never permitted on Sundays. Lastly, we overhauled our 3-1-1 noise complaint review process and added review by an independent third-party consultant. The council's partnership was crucial to help push forward these improvements. At both DMH and East 34th Street, there are annual flight caps: 30,000 tour flights at DMH, as previously mentioned, and 28,000 flights at East 34th Street. EDC regularly monitors compliance with these annual volume caps, the operating hour restrictions, and adherence to the over-water-only tour routes. We take responsibility very seriously, and we are committed to working with the council to address noise complaints from helicopter operators or operations. To this end, EDC monitors public complaints related to all helicopter flights over New York City, not just flights to and from the two EDC-run heliports. Under our process, after a member of the public lodges a complaint through the city's 3-1-1 portal, this data is transmitted to EDC and the DMH operator for review. The 3-1-1 data then undergoes two rounds of analysis, first by our operator, and then by an independent third-party consultant with expertise in analyzing flight paths. Once both rounds of analysis are complete, EDC compiles reports that are transmitted to the city council, elected officials, and relevant community boards on a monthly basis. We welcome the opportunity to work with the council on how the data is presented in these reports. In addition, we are committed to responding individually to each and every complaint. To give some context for this, let's look at the 3-1-1 complaint data for October 2022. We received 1,917 3-1-1 noise complaints. After the two rounds of analysis were completed, it was found that 57% of complaints concern helicopter flights that take off from New Jersey. 38% concern other flights, which include private and charter flights, New York State Police, among others. 2% concern NYPD flights, and 2% concern media flights. In addition, it was found that there was one substantiated complaint of a tour flight that went over land. Pursuant to established protocol, Saker Aviation, our operator, advised us that they issued a warning to the operator, and the next violation will result in a fine. Historically, less than 5% of the 3-1-1 noise complaints are due to tour flights originating at the downtown Manhattan heliport. We believe that the low number of complaints from DMH-based tour flights is due to the requirement that these tours fly over water, not land. We are committed to continuing to work with the council to achieve our shared goals and address the quality of life concerns that have been voiced by communities adjacent to the heliports and tour routes that we are able to regulate. EDC currently has an open procurement, as you mentioned, for an operator of the DMH, as the current concession agreement will expire in April 2023. EDC issued a request for proposal last summer. We have received a robust response. We are now in the selection phase with the aim to give New York City the maximum control over tour flights' operations to advance post-pandemic business recovery while continuing to prioritize quality of life concerns and ensure safe operations. Our goal is to select an operator with the highest and safest quality aviation services. In addition, through the RFP, EDC explicitly sought innovative responses that would provide the basis for introducing quieter and greener electric helicopters. Finally, the RFP sought information on exploring additional uses for heliports for public benefit, including waterborne freight to reduce local truck traffic, cinematography, and community-focused events. We look forward to updating you once a new concession agreement is finalized and an operator is selected. New York City's city-run heliports are a critical component of our transportation network and are essential for business and the growth of the local economy. We are committed to continuing our partnership with the council to ensure the usage of our heliports for the public benefit, while also addressing quality of life concerns. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and Mikel and I are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, good morning. Thank you for your testimony. I'm just gonna get right into some of the questions. So, in regards to the heliports owned by EDC, can you get into specifics outside of your testimony? I know we went over the types of flights operated out of downtown and East 34th heliports, but how... Can you talk about what type of flights? And then, can you kind of discuss if there's any way for... Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm getting over a cold from like a week and a half ago, and it's just lingering with me. If you could discuss if there's any way from someone on the ground to distinguish those types of flights? Yeah, the type of flights operated out of downtown and East 34th? And then, if anyone on the ground could perhaps distinguish between the type of flights that are operating out of it?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, council member. I appreciate that. So, downtown Manhattan heliport is primarily tour flights. 95% of the flights from DMH are tour flights, and 5% are other flights. East 34th Street is much more diverse. There are no tour flights. And medevac to the local hospitals are about 20% of the total. Corporate flights are about 30%. Shared rides, which is the blades and the zips, the ones where, you know, basically it's like an airplane, is 30% of the total. Private owner aircraft is 15%, and then aerial photo aircraft is 5%. And in response to your next question, there are ways to distinguish different types of aircraft. We don't expect the general public to know all of these things, but generally, when reporting complaints, and I will say that members of the public are really good at identifying the tail numbers, the color, and the location of the... If we have those information, we can generally pinpoint each flight and respond to that individual complaint.
Okay. And so, just to clarify, you said, I believe in the testimony, we have about 26,000 of the flights that come out of where most of the tourist flights are, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so we went from 60,000 to slashing by 50% of under 30,000, but yet we're still under 30,000, right?
Right now, yes.
Okay, so there could be room for potentially slashing or cutting down that a bit more, since we haven't gone over the 30,000 limit?
In the past year, and in previous years, we've used... We've gone up to that limit.
You've gone up to about 30,000?
To the 30,000, yes. Closer to the 30,000, yes.
And then, in terms of monitoring the flights, is anyone monitoring them? How are they tracked? And how does the public access this information? I appreciate you saying we have folks on the ground that can find tail numbers and colors. I don't quite necessarily know if I could do that if I was on the ground, right? But I do know one of the main issues that we have been hearing from the public and that I've tried to, in moments where I've gone to the Harbor School or am downtown. My mom works at NYU Land Gone, so I pick her up quite frequently since she knows I work down here and have to pass her on the way home. But I do know one of the larger complaints that we end up getting is like their, you know, tail numbers are not mentioned, or they're not being, I guess, placed out or, you know, for the public to see. So, how are we monitoring these flights and tracking all of that? And how does the public actually get access to that information?
Flight information is an open door... I'm sorry, open platform, open data. So, there is sources, there are websites that we can look at to track flights. The same you can do, you can track, you know, every vessel on the water in the world, you know? All of the helicopters have to have transponders that are on, and in that way, you know, you can go to that website and see flights, you know, in real time. And after this, we can send, you know, links to those websites. And, you know, in terms of identifying, you know, numbers, the numbers should be prominent enough to read. It depends on the altitude of the aircraft. So, sometime if they're flying too high, it may be difficult. But the color is important, and the location and time of day, I should mention as well. And with that information, which on the 3-1-1 portal, it specifies, you know, that that's the information that the general public should be looking at. And like I said, we have some pretty good observers out there. But at the same time, our third-party consultant is always continuously monitoring complaint data and assessing whether or not that resulted from one of the tour flights. And as I said before, it's a very small percentage that are resulting from tour flights.
Okay. And in terms of public access to information like that, do we get to see differentiators? And I will be very honest with you, I haven't been on the apps too frequently myself, but as you can imagine, I know that they exist, right? I have lots of folks from the public keeping me informed of what's happening and what they're experiencing. So, I've seen flight patterns, I've seen the timing, I've seen the lack thereof, public information. So, in terms of, you know, the types of flights and why the colors are important, does that differentiate? Like, if this is an essential flight versus a tourist flight versus like an organ donation flight versus... Like, is that why the colors are important?
With that information, it's like a little forensic science, we can figure that out, generally. Not in all cases, but we can.
And is that given to the city in a report or in any...?
EDC does get that report, and then we do distribute that to the council on a monthly basis.
Okay. Oh.
It sounds like we have more work to do, though, but that...
Yeah, I mean, we won't dive too deep into this report. I have the report in front of me, which is this, correct? Which I don't know. Yeah? This doesn't show me anything. I mean, like, I'm being very honest and transparent in this moment in that when I first saw this information and I was looking through this, you know, the reason why this is like top one question for me is because I want to see where we are compliant and where we are not compliant. This is not telling me much of anything outside of, yes, we are compliant, which I initially said, great, but what does that mean in terms of being compliant? And I, you know, even just with the question right now that I asked, how do we know what flights are occurring by what color pattern? How many violations do we have of flights that have occurred that haven't shown their tail number? Things like that, that I think the public deserves to know, and quite frankly, I do, is not in this report. So, we won't dive too deep, because I do think this is a conversation that operators... It's a conversation that has to happen with operators, since they are the ones giving EDC information that then comes to us. But we do need to dig a little deeper on to how we can get more information on these monthly reports.
Thank you, Chair, and I'll just add on to that, that the template for this particular report was sort of born out of that 2016 exercise that you referenced earlier. And I certainly think that there's room for us to come back and talk with you and the rest of the council about ways that we can better represent this data. I think that at the time, because there was so much focus on tour flights that were originating from EDC's two heliports, like, that's where the focus was. But obviously, given the fact that there are, you know, increasing numbers of tour flights coming from New Jersey, where we don't have that level of data, right? Or the same level of restrictions that we do from the city heliports, we're certainly happy to talk with you about what data you and your constituents think is critical to be represented here, and how and if we can better share that.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'd love to talk more about that and figure out ways that we can do that, only because I do believe the public, one, deserves to have the transparent information, but also, I would like to speak on behalf of most New Yorkers and say that folks are amenable to emergency flights. People are understanding of noise because of, you know, hospital needing access to something. But because there isn't transparency in this area, there's room for people to feel misled. There's room for people to feel or be apathetic towards their government working for them. And, I mean, for me, it's one of my biggest goals is to ensure that we are making government work for people and meeting them where they're at. And this isn't even meeting me where I'm at, so we gotta talk more about that. Okay. So, I'd like to... In terms of the flights that are operated out of both of the heliports, what times do these flights operate during the day? Are there some times that are more heavier than others? I'm realizing we now have like helicopter-sharing opportunities, which I didn't realize was the thing. But are we seeing, just like how we see congestion in the city with rush hour? Are we seeing that there are heavier times? Or is it, you know, different timings, different days, different weeks? We see variations.
Yeah, certainly with tour flights, it's very much seasonal, very much tracks to tourism, when the peak periods for tourism, so spring, summer, and then during major holidays is when we see the most of the tour flights. In terms of the other flights, you know, it really is, I think, more... It's more even across the day in terms of charters and corporates, but probably more, you know, linked, certainly correlating with rush hours, just like everything else. There's a rush hour in the air.
Great. Thank you. And RFP for the new heliport operator contract for DMH was issued this past summer, and we understand that EDC is currently in the process of evaluating bids. What is the expected duration of the new heliport contract? And is it possible to make periodic amendments during that time?
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, as you mentioned in your opening remarks, the concession agreement currently for the operator at DMH expires in April, at the end of April 2023. So, EDC is obligated to put out an RFP to ensure that we, you know, find the best possible operator. And our goals here are really to find an operator that has the highest and safest quality of services, that will work with EDC, the city, the council, and community. And, you know, as Andrew mentioned, looking at opportunities to diversify our heliport uses, both on, you know, the marine freight opportunities, using those spaces for community benefits and so on, and really thinking about how to diversify the revenue streams. So, in terms of the expected duration for the new contract, that will end in five years with a five-year extension to renew. And in terms of being able to make periodic amendments, you know, it's very similar to all of EDC and the city's applicable rules that are laid out for concession agreements. So, you know, typical of those contracts, there are opportunities to amend as it's permitted under the original contract.
I have a question on that. What would be under that periodic amendment? What would give rise to the ability to have an amendment under this new contract?
Yeah, I think that's very case-specific, right? So, if there are, you know, something that was agreed to originally but is no longer feasible, and we have to readjust...
All right, what about in the case of this contract?
I'm sorry, I mean, for the contract itself, let's say in year two, there's something that had been negotiated in the contract that now needs to be amended or changed. Depending on what that circumstances would drive the conversations of what is amendable or changeable. So, it really matters or is specific to the issue at hand, right? Like, not every...
I have done contract law before, and when there is something that gives rise, you have to articulate what that standard is in order for something to be amended. What is that standard being articulated in this new contract?
Yeah, Andrew, please jump in.
I would... The best chance to say is that what we are... We're sticking with what has, in our mind, works, has worked well in the past, which is the restrictions on flights, the number of flights, you know, at each, at downtown, the operating hours for the tour flights, and, you know, and health and safety protocols.
And just... Just a question on the maintenance of each heliport. How much does the city spend to maintain each heliport?
So, at this time, the city doesn't spend anything to maintain the heliports. The maintenance is fully funded by the operators.
Great. And how much does the city receive in revenues from each of the heliports?
So, EDC took over these assets from the Port Authority in 2008. And since then, revenues have ranged from 1.2 million to 2 million annually at each heliport. And so, with the new RFP now closed, we're currently negotiating the terms for the next concession agreement. And once those negotiations are complete, we're happy to come back and talk about the new revenue structure with the council.
Okay. Just to reiterate, you said about 2 million?
Yeah, ranging from 1.2 to 2 million per heliport.
Okay. And does that feel worth it in terms of all the complaints that we have?
You know, so I think for EDC, it's not just about the revenue, it's also about being able to control flight paths, particularly for the tours, being able to cap the number of tour flights and hours that we're able to get through that contractual relationship. And so, you know, and I think we've alluded to this, but there is the question that if we were to restrict the number of tour flights even further, would that market then move to New Jersey, where we then don't have any control? Because, you know, tour flights that come from New Jersey don't have the same requirements obligating them to only fly over water, per se. So, it's beyond revenue. It's about, you know, the transportation network, maintaining these assets, and, you know, part of the city's, you know, larger efforts.
Yeah, I mean, I completely hear that argument quite often about operators moving to a different city or a different state. I mean, we have operators right now that are working out of New York City that are still flying people to Capri. So, I feel like they're working in other places already, but the place to be is in New York City. And so, that really doesn't move me, per se, and like having more restrictions or being a bit harder on transparency, because truthfully, like, we need that in order to continue operating. It's a shame that we don't have the operators here today to, you know, speak on their own behalf about why they're essential, but I think the nuisance seems to be beyond just having control of flight patterns. And, you know, FAA still regulates most of this. That's the other larger thing that we get pushed back on, is we can only regulate so much. And so, we need to be able to regulate what we can. But thank you for the explanation. I understand where you're coming from. So, in terms of noise reduction, what has the EDC done to reduce any of the noise generated by the helicopters?
I would say the number-one thing we've done is regulating the routes that we can regulate, which is the tour flights, and creating the two routes that only fly over water. And at the same time, working with the industry to promote and hopefully to accelerate the adoption of cleaner, greener, quieter helicopters in the future.
Yeah, I'll begin with my round of questions. But before I do that, I'd like to acknowledge the new members that have joined us: Councilmember De La Rosa, Gail Brewer, Aviles, and Lincoln Wrestler. Joined before that was Marte and Kagan. So, how would someone on the ground register a complaint for helicopter noise? I know you went into that a bit in your opening. If you could please walk us through the procedure of making a helicopter noise complaint?
Sure. And it really begins with observing, you know, the flight and trying to identify, if you can, the flight number or the color of the aircraft, as well as its location, where you are, and the time of day. Then either phoning it into the 3-1-1 phone number or to go onto the 3-1-1 portal. And that is the best way to do, you know, to register your complaint.
Does that seem simple or straightforward to you?
We can always improve, and we are open to suggestions to improve.
Good answer, good answer.
Yes.
Do you think the person on the ground is equipped with enough information to be able to identify the type of helicopter they're complaining about?
I think that it is... That, given the criteria, if location and time of day, we can usually find it because of the open data and the ability for us to track. So, you know, color and the number of the aircraft is extra and really more helpful. But that is something we are committed to working on to do better.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it would seem that it would be ideal if anyone at any given moment could just turn their phone on and say, hey, that's this plane, and be able to submit a complaint that way, right?
You can take a picture. I meant to say that. You can take a picture as well and put it in the portal.
Yeah, you can jump in.
Can I just ask a quick question? So, I feel like there's somewhat of a disconnect with what you just stated and what we receive in terms of 3-1-1 complaints. Because folks are not able to quite... With the amount of complaints that we have and the different sections and areas of differentiation between what they see, what they're experiencing, and what they're putting down, I don't think those two things match up.
Then I think that's something we should work on more closely. I'm not disagreeing.
Okay. And then, just quickly wanted to ask, in terms of the 3-1-1 monthly report, we have a section... I have a section in front of me that has other complaints by borough, but they're the most, they're the most section, like, the most complaints that we have by borough. So, I don't know if you do have a similar copy in front?
Yes.
I printed my own, so... So, in the other complaint section, can we dive into what those potentially could be? And you see, like, I have the month of September in front of me, not the most up-to-date, but month of September, Brooklyn has 53 other complaints in comparison to six NYPD and two ENG complaints.
Yeah, that can be state... Yeah, that can be state, state helicopters, like state police helicopters. It can be federal. It could be other, you know, just helicopters that are, we just are not able to identify as either, you know, charter or, or private helicopters.
So come, I mean, this is coming from the same operator, right? Saker submits both of these to us?
Yes, but again, these are sort of citywide.
Right. Why couldn't those be differentiated? Like why could we not get a breakdown of what each of those like other complaints are in terms of helping identify or answer at least to the complaints that were put in? Like this was a state flight, not under our jurisdiction or, you know, so on and so forth.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of general aviation. They can also be helicopters flying between, over New York from other states and they're just passing through and we just don't have a record of it. But we do know, we do have the flight path. I think that we can say that we can get back to with a, with, at least in a deeper understanding if we can get better at that category.
Sure. I think that would be appreciated. And is this, is this something around also that like potentially maybe the FAA needs to be more communicative with the state and the city on the type of flights?
Well, we, we do coordinate closely with the FAA and we can certainly ask them. They are very, they are responsive.
Okay, and also in this 311 report, comparatively across the board and for Brooklyn, Lower Manhattan, Manhattan and Governor's Island, there are zero air tour complaints. Like that, that seems, I don't, I get a little anxious and I smile. Like that seems really disingenuous in terms of the, the numbers of complaints coming in, the number of tour flights that we actually know occur. Like I was on Governor's Island and speaking with students and it was impossible to talk to them outside because of the amount of helicopters going in. I, maybe it was that many emergencies in a 45-minute block, but to see zero complaints across the board seems very disingenuous.
Yeah, we, we certainly hear you on, on how we need to relook at this report. I think what's causing some of the confusion is our reporting out on 311 complaints for air tours that originated from DMH, right? The tours that only go over water versus air tours that originate from New Jersey that we're, are, are not captured under this air tour section. Because we were so, again, I mentioned, you know, at, at the time in 2016, so focused on those originating from DMH. So I, if I'm hearing you correctly, I think what you're saying is having that parsed out to understand, yes, complaints that, for air tours that originate in DMH, but also complaints for air tours that have originated other locations, the ones that are more likely to be flying over land or flying on Sundays, for instance, so that we can better see the totality of air tours and not just ones that are, you know, governed under our current restrictions.
I mean, there is a section here that says likely New Jersey complaints. And so for Lower Manhattan and Manhattan, we have numbers. I mean, Manhattan has 638 complaints, which is a pretty large number on this bracket. But I mean, I, I do think we need more explanation. I do think we really need to frankly speak to operators about what they're logging as air tour complaints. There's absolutely no way that they are at zero in comparison to where we can guesstimate New Jersey is violating and coming over 638 times, right? Comparatively, even if, I mean, maybe there needs to be a differentiation between like New Jersey and the type of flight for New Jersey, whether that's a tourist flight or that's an essential flight. But looking at this breakdown of 311 helicopter complaint data, like, I'm sorry, but there is absolutely no way there can be zero across the board of the heliports for air tour complaints, especially when we know there are 26,000 of them occurring annually.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Farias. What has EDC done to reduce the noise generated by these helicopters? And to that end, what authority does EDC have over helicopter noise?
Just start by saying that our greatest control is the concession agreement and our ability to regulate the tour industry through that concession agreement, which includes the mandated tours occurring only over water and the volume caps, the 30,000 flights per year. In addition to that is our ability to work with the industry, with the FAA, with, with others on the aircraft manufacturers on innovation. As I said in the testimony, looking at hopefully rapid, more rapid adoption of quieter and cleaner helicopters.
How does a concession agreement help reduce the noise generated by these helicopters?
It, it really goes back to setting the limits, you know, having that authority to set limits on the number of flights and the time of day. So limiting them to that, the 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM period was one. Also totally eliminating flights over land was also one of the things. One of the mechanisms that we have that, you know, we, we don't have that control over flights, tourist flights emanating from New Jersey.
Thank you. What, what authority does the FAA have?
That's federal, through federal legislation, they, they have a lot of authority over routes, you know, that fly interstate and also the protocols used to license the helicopters, the types of aircraft, the personnel, what they're allowed to do, you know, the doors on, doors off, those kinds of things. So the wide gamut of regulations of all the things aviation comes through the FAA.
How does EDC work with FAA specifically on noise issues?
We talk to them a lot. We, what we seek to do, for instance, importantly, when we modified, we, we worked with the FAA on modifying the routes that go over Long Island Sound, you know, that fly over Queens, in particular Northern Queens. So those kinds of discussions. But we've also had conversations with them about the tour flights and helping us to create safe, safer flight paths over the water. They definitely played a role in helping us to define those corridors where we could, where the tour industry could, could operate and as well as reducing the nuisance complaints.
Thank you. How does the city track noise complaints that are specific to helicopters? And which neighborhoods have the most complaints?
So in, in terms of complaints by neighborhood, we're seeing the most coming from the Upper West Side, Midtown East and Brooklyn Heights.
Sorry, how does the city track noise complaints?
So once a complaint is entered into the 311 system, DO-IT sends that report over to EDC and the DMH operator for review. And as Andrew mentioned in our testimony, that data goes through two rounds of analysis. So first, the DMH operator cross-references the 311 complaints against their logbook and their log tail runs, excuse me, tail numbers. They also check by flight times and each complaint is assigned a specific code. So that's where it's like, you know, out of jurisdiction, air tour, NYPD, news media and so on. We mentioned that we also have a third-party consultant. So that consultant analyzes a random sampling of 75 of the complaints to 311. And they use this sophisticated technology called Automated Dependent Surveillance Broadcast System. And then they cross-reference the complaints with their logs and they do compliance monitoring. So it's like an additional check against the DMH operator's work. And they're looking both at the flight path and our flight cap. But you know, as we mentioned, at DMH, the flights are capped to 30,000 per year. And at East 34th, it's 28,000 per year.
Sorry, Mikel, can you repeat that one more time? You said the automated.
Yeah, it's called the Automated Dependent Surveillance Broadcast, so it is a mouthful. But it is the way that they are able to take that random sample and cross-check against what the DMH operator has already reviewed.
And how does EDC, how does EDC then respond to these complaints once you've received them?
Yeah, so once the operator has compiled the consultant's analysis into its report, then we send it to council members and anyone else who's been asked to add to our distribution list. Our EDC team then goes into the 311 open data system to manually resolve the complaint by categorizing the source of aircraft. And the complainant is supposed to receive a notification that there's been a resolution of their complaint. We understand that there has been a backlog on that final resolution piece largely because of the uptick in complaints that we saw particularly during COVID. And so we are working to, you know, close those out. But I, I should be clear that even if it has not been formally closed out to the complainant, that data is still shown in the reports that are submitted to the council every month. So while there's a backlog in the closeout, the data is still up to date and accurate when we send it to you.
Thank you. This is my last two questions before we turn over to my colleagues. Several council members have received complaints from their constituents that they are dissatisfied with how the city's 311 system handles their helicopter noise complaints. What is the city doing to improve their handling of helicopter noise complaints?
Yeah, you know, I think as we said earlier, we're certainly open to discussions with you and your constituents about how that process can be better. You know, things that worked in 2016 don't necessarily work as we're going into 2023 and there's room for improvement and there's room for collaboration as we work with you. I think generally speaking, you know, we hold regularly interdepartmental meetings with DO-IT, with the DMH operator. We're always trying to upgrade the methodologies that we're using so that we're getting to that point of resolution. Because we understand that if you are someone who's submitting a 311 complaint, you want a timely resolution to know that that's been addressed. And you know, it's, it's not satisfactory for us to say, well, you know, we've reported it out monthly to you. You want to be able to know that we've looked at it, that we've addressed it if it needed further follow-up. And so we're, we're working to resolve that.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to our, my colleague, Councilmember Ari Kagan for questions.
Thank you so much for hosting this hearing in the first place. Though I represent South from Brooklyn, I, I, I'm not a stranger to Manhattan and complaints from Manhattan all the time, especially about helicopter noise. Some of the questions are like obvious to me. For example, we're talking about almost 26,000 complaints in 2021. And in your report today, you said it's 1,917 complaints in October of this year, which means if we multiply two by 12, it's 24,000 a year, meaning almost no reduction this year over the last year. Meaning we have a same, almost same number of complaints about noise this year as it was last year. So there is no improvement. And nobody in the city will complain about emergency calls, about fire department, about NYPD, hospitals. You mentioned media, no problem. But when I hear about charter and corporate flights, you mentioned, you quoted like 38% concern other flights and you included New York State Police, but you also included private and charter flights. You also said about 30% corporate flights and of course tour flights. So that's all could be regulated by you, could be easily controlled by you, could be easily reduced by you. And second question is about New Jersey. So New Jersey is not like Canada or like other country, you know, like, and you're saying you talked to federal administration, aviation administration on a regular basis. So how many Zoom meetings, forget about physical visits, but Zoom meetings you'd have with your colleagues in New Jersey to reduce number of tour flights from New Jersey to us? That's my two questions.
I think I want to begin by saying that we're committed to reducing the complaints. That's the first thing. Having said that, our tools at EDC are limited to the tour flights because the rest of it, it generally falls under general aviation categories. And therefore, we do have to work with the FAA. We have reached out to the New Jersey constituencies as well. We've participated in task forces that have been held on the issue and including all of those actors and will continue to do that.
So but what about again, all of these tour flights, corporate flights, charter flights? All of these flights, you're saying like you have zero control whatsoever? Tour flights, you have zero control over, zero control?
No, tour, tour flights from the downtown heliport, we do have control. And that's, and, and, and let me just add, we have the ability to impose violations and fines if they're out of conformity with the prescribed routes. But that's the, really the only tool that we have, you know, short of, you know, with, you know, in terms of general aviation. That with general aviation, we continue to work with the, with the FAA and the, and the other constituencies.
But again, judging from 24,000 complaints this year, which is expected from your statistics, it means your efforts are not very successful.
You know, the other, the other, the other thing that we can do and we're excited about is to incentivize the adoption of quieter aircraft in the future. And that's, and from what we understand, as we, in our testimony, as we said, there are, there's a lot of innovation and we will continue to work and we'll continue to share with the council on what we know about that innovation.
How many fines did you impose this year on tour flights that broke rules? How many fines in total? Number of fines you imposed this year for any violations of noise violations, complaints that you controlled? And how many fines? What was the punishment for like making life unbearable for so many residents of Manhattan?
On the, the tour flights that we control from downtown heliport, we found less than 5% of the total complaints were from, uh, tour flights from the heliport.
So basically everything is okay?
I'm not saying that. We can always do better and we're, and we're happy to work with the council.
I believe current situation is completely unacceptable. 26,000 complaints last year, 24,000 this year, 5% you send like violations. We have no control over New Jersey. We have no control over charter, no control of corporate flights. We talked to federal aviation, but like we can control anything, we cannot do anything. That's what you're saying?
And what I'm saying is that we're committed to working on this problem and continuing to work with the council to identify betterments.
I believe like, okay, I expressed myself. It's totally unacceptable in my opinion.
Next up, we'll have Councilmember Marte.
Thank you, Chair, for hosting this hearing and thank you for being here today. I represent Lower Manhattan and I'm, I expect and I take a good guess that most of those complaints are coming from my district. And we're having this hearing today because the current system isn't working. Isn't working for residents, isn't working for people that work in my district. Students that learn in my district have all complained to our office about helicopter noise complaints. I think outside of rat complaints, noise complaints are the second most complaints that my office hears. And so we need to have a drastic change. We want to leave this hearing knowing that there will be concrete steps like in 2016, when you cut the amount of tourism helicopter flights in half. And one thing I think we can address, and I think you haven't really mentioned this, is the hours of use. Currently, there's no flights leaving, helicopter flights, tourism flights leaving on Sunday. How about eliminating on Saturday and limiting the hours? Instead of 7:00 PM, as we all know, families get back home around 6:00 PM to 5:00 PM or even earlier. I think that's something within your power that you can control. And whether someone wants to go to New Jersey to take a helicopter flight, I think that's out of our scope. We shouldn't worry about that. If someone's going to do that, they're going to do that anyways, whether it's for better prices or longer durations, right? We're talking about our constituents, New York City residents, and making sure that their quality of life can improve.
And agree with your statement. I think though, one, one thing I'd like to say and to, not to push back, but to make the point that we are good managers of these assets. We are able to track. We are able to set limits. We don't, if we lose that control mechanism, then what we saw during the COVID period was more flights emanating from the New Jersey heliports, flying really wherever they wanted to fly. And what we're doing is managing the flights effectively, in our view. And, and, and I think it does worry us that losing that control would certainly, as you And I think it does worry us that losing that control would certainly, as you said, Councilmember, mean people are still going to take air tours. And unless there was a total solution to, you know, and whether that's state or federal, it behooves us to maintain control where we can. That's, that's what I would say. And respectfully understand about the complaints. And again, we, you know, we want to work with you to address those complaints.
And my second question is, last year, New Yorkers voted on a green amendment for cleaner air, access to air, cleaner environment. As we know, helicopter use is super pollutant and we have to change that, right? I forget the statistics, but I'm sure Stop the Chop would tell you how many cars idling compared to one helicopter just flying around their neighborhood. And knowing that Lower Manhattan does have some of the highest asthma rates, what steps are you doing and immediately now waiting for a potential super helicopter five years down the line to become mainstream to address this environmental impact?
Certainly through the RFP, we stressed that we want quieter helicopters. We want, we want to incentivize quieter helicopters, but we also want to see more rapid adoption of the quieter and greener, the non-diesel helicopters, electric helicopters.
And my final question for this new contract, as you look at the RFE proposals, why don't you just mandate that they use the green, most greener, efficient helicopter use than just make it something on your checklist?
I think the response is just realistically, we just don't have the, the numbers are available that would result in a viable, any viable helicopter service if we did that. So what we can do though is, is choose an operator who will work with us and work with you all to more rapidly adopt the greener technology.
And my final question is, if you do spend time down at the helicopter site, and I cycle through there all the time, it's one of my most common routes, there is a lot of car traffic that affects that area because of the helicopter use. And it's right off the highway and it creates a really dangerous situation. So what is EDC doing to either incentivize people don't use a taxi to get there or vehicle used to get there instead of other alternative transportation methods?
That's a great question. We, we have been working with DOT on the entryway, to improve the entryway, to make it safer. And that's been a process because, triggered by the new concession agreement. So appreciate that. So maybe we can follow up on that as well. Thank you.
I just have a quick follow-up. Thank you, Councilmember Marte. Just on the, on the charter flight, can, can the flights be mandated to solely go over water, like tourism versus what we have right now? For the charter flights, can they be mandated to go over water like our tourism flights?
Unfortunately, no. They, the charter flights use general aviation rules and they are, they are able to fly over prescribed routes set by the FAA.
Okay. Another FAA problem we have to get.
We don't have a tool, unfortunately.
I will call up Councilmember Bressler.
Thank you so much, Chairs. Farias and Abreu greatly appreciate your leadership, especially want to thank Chair Farias for being so outspoken on this issue and, and for setting up this, and for you both for setting up this hearing today. And I want to thank my other colleagues who have, were co-primes on our bill, Intro 551. I know Councilmembers Marte and Aviles were with us on day one on this one. And Gail Brewer not only was with us on day one, but has been leading on this issue for more years than I can count. So that's a lot of years. That's when I graduated from high school. So thank you, Gail. But in all seriousness, really want to thank my colleagues for the leadership on this issue. And I really want to thank Stop the Chop and the BHA and all the groups that have been pushing here. And I like EDC, so I take no pleasure in beating up on you, but on this issue, I think you really deserve it. New Yorkers shouldn't be forced to suffer from severe noise and air pollution so that the privileged few can get to the Hamptons or JFK faster, or so that a few tourists can see Brooklyn Bridge Park from above. I can promise you, it's perfectly beautiful from the ground. Every day helicopters take off from public helipads to serve the rich view at the expense of our environment and our well-being. This isn't just a quality of life issue, it's a climate issue. Every month, there are 4,000 non-essential helicopter flights from our city EDC-owned helipads, accounting for a monthly average of more than 50,000 gallons of fuel. We introduced Intro 551 with 23 cosponsors to ban these non-essential flights once and for all. And the reason we did is because as I look back on this 2016 agreement, and I worked in the previous administration during this time, I see it as a total failure. We have no choice but to take the extreme action of eliminating this non-essential travel because your efforts to regulate and manage this industry have come up short. And so, you know, when I look back at the data in 2016, when this agreement was made, there was an average of 84 complaints a month around noise to 311. Now, six years later, we're at over 2,046 is the average number of complaints per month. It has increased 24 times over these six years despite whatever agreement was made six years ago. It is an utter and total failure. So I'd like to just pause there and say I strongly support the elimination of non-essential helicopter travel from city heliports. It should happen tomorrow. And I hope that our bill to make that happen, we'll get a hearing in the near future. And I think the grounds will of support that you'll hear today for greater oversight and regulation of this industry is a step in that direction. So I'd like to shift a little on my questioning though, to some of the environmental issues that Councilmember Marte just referenced. Is EDC monitoring idling times? And I ask this because a controller report from 2018 found that 20% of flights are idling for at least 10 minutes. One helicopter idling has the same impact as 40 cars idling. And as my good friend, formerly of DEP, knows well, three minutes of an idling car can lead to a fine on the streets of New York. 40 cars idling is the equivalent of one helicopter. 20% of helicopters are idling for 10 minutes on average at a time. This is a major environmental impact. What are you doing to rein in the egregious idling and the environmental impacts that it's having in our community?
Councilmember, thank you for your comments and we take them seriously, of course. On the air quality issue, we do monitor air quality at the downtown heliport. And we are looking at, you know, exceedances of thresholds. We do not, we are not registering threshold exceedances at downtown.
But you're not monitoring idling in particular, which has huge impacts, not just on the environment, but on noise. When you have, I mean, you cannot enjoy an afternoon in the park, an afternoon on your stoop, an afternoon in your backyard, when you have a helicopter sitting above you for 10 minutes at a time. It is so loud, I can't have a conversation with the person next to me. What are you doing to monitor and regulate this particular issue?
We monitor every flight that goes into and out of downtown heliport and East 34th Street. So we, we are compiling data on that. In terms of actual time on the ground, idling, we can get back to you on that. I don't have an answer on whether we monitor that.
And idling above, right? It's both. It's both idling on the ground and idling above that causes serious issues.
Can I, on the, one, one thing I would like to point out is that the tour flights do not hover. There is no hovering allowed in the flights. They, they have to continue on their route.
If somebody grew up in Brooklyn Heights, we have a very different lived experience. And I would really caution you to, on the accuracy of that statement. That is not what my neighbors experience every day. And it is our office that receives these complaints. If you think 311 is hearing about it, just take a day of receiving phone calls at 410 Atlantic and the 33rd. You will be overwhelmed with the number of people who are pissed about how upset, how egregious the helicopter noise is in our community. So, and I, you mentioned, just if I may for one final question, you mentioned your concern about this industry shifting more to New Jersey if there were greater regulations that limited or eliminated heliport travel from city heliports. But a substantial number of these trips are folks that are going to JFK or the Hamptons. There is no world in which somebody is going to drive to New Jersey to get on a helicopter to go to JFK or the Hamptons. We could eliminate that travel altogether. Why not do it today? Doesn't our environment and our quality of life require it? London and Paris, excuse me, eliminates all of these non-essential travel of helicopters over their, over the city. Aren't we a great global city like Paris?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. So just to clarify that, that earlier comment about control and whether market is going to move to New Jersey, that conversation is really specifically about the tour flights, right? Because that, as per our concession agreements, is the types of flights that we actually can control in terms of the caps and the routes. So for example, you referenced constituents calling about idling either like above their homes or over a park or so on. So to be clear, the tour flights that originate from the downtown Manhattan heliport should only be flying over water and those are not hovering over water. So when you're seeing helicopters that are tour flights that are, you know, above Central Park or above a park in your community, those are the types of tour flights that are originating outside.
But we're a waterfront district. So I've got folks who live on the waterfront. If you go to Brooklyn Bridge Park where we have millions of folks a year that come to enjoy this majestic waterfront park in Brooklyn, they are experiencing helicopters right over their head and it is a problem. And they are coming from your helipads. So like I take, I take umbrage at this notion that they're just hanging over the water and it's not impacting our communities. That is not our lived experience every day. Otherwise, you wouldn't see a 24-fold increase from 84 complaints a month to 2,046 average complaints a month over these last six years. I know I talk too much, so I'm sorry. But this is a serious problem and I don't think you all are doing anything to regulate it. It is getting much worse.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
I would also like to, I'd like to introduce the inimitable staunch advocate against helicopter noise, Gail Brewer.
Thank you very much. I did recently take a helicopter from New Jersey, doors open, and it was a good experience to see how horrific it is. Literally, you fly over the, coming to the West Side, Central Park, right over Brooklyn in terms of what Lincoln Wrestler was talking about, and circling 10 times Governor's Island, lovely space to not be able to hear yourself think, and then around and around and around the Statue of Liberty. So two questions. Are you differentiating? Obviously, if I, if I do the, the Flight Radar 24, I can figure it out. But are you differentiating? Do you know how many New Jersey flights are versus New York? And how many complaints 311 are from New Jersey versus New York? And can you give those numbers?
We, we do. We can differentiate, Councilmember, and it's good to see.
You don't have them today?
57% of the flights over the last period that we monitored were in New Jersey.
Okay.
The complaints were in New Jersey.
But of the 2,000 that Lincoln Wrestler mentioned, and I have the same numbers, whatever it is, of that month, do you know how many are New Jersey and how many are New York specifically?
I don't know offhand, but I would imagine it's still a higher percentage from New Jersey.
Okay. And then what, I've met with the governor, council members, mayors, elected officials, town, state, and federal. What have you done to talk to New Jersey specifically? Don't say you can't. That is not correct. I don't want to use a bad word. You can talk to New Jersey. Something called the Port Authority, have you heard of them? So what is this mayor doing to talk to New Jersey about this issue?
The last time we spoke with the New Jersey jurisdictions, they told us that they were not getting complaints from their constituents.
That's not correct. That is absolutely not correct. When was the last time you spoke to them?
Just a couple of months ago.
Okay, well, that is not correct. So you need to have a much more, much broader discussion with the folks in New Jersey, if that's what the issue is. Number two, Congress and Nadler has a bill. Do you support it to end all flights, non-essential helicopter, over cities of 8 million or more? Do you support that bill?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think at this time, what we're, what we'd like to do is really work with the council to address the questions and the concerns at this point. You know, the Law Department is still reviewing the bill. We're still discussing it internally, so we're not prepared to say our, our support or non-support either way of it. I think though, what we really are hoping to communicate here is that we understand that these are very serious issues and very serious challenges with very complicated responses.
Okay, I have 30 pages here of complaints, 30 pages. And, you know, it's, 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 the number one, and you've got to get rid of these non-essential helicopters. You, so one way or another, we're going to do it. So I would suggest that you at least tell the public that you're on the path to try to do that. It was suggested earlier, I think Councilmember Marte, if you're not, if you're non, if you're non-diesel and you're electric, then that should be the only possibility for your ability to fly out of Lower Manhattan. If you, it's like everything else. If we say we have to have electric cars, then we will have electric cars. If we don't tell people that they have to be electric, they're not going to be electric. If you don't tell them to compost, these lazy, my lazy neighbors won't compost. Same thing. You've got to say in your contract, "non-essential and electric only." It, nothing, you have no idea how upset people are. And the 311, if you're not getting the calls like we are, you don't know. So my other question, what's the cost of the complaint system? You have a, you said you have a consultant, et cetera. What's the cost of that complaint system for the contract that you have, that's working with all the complaints? I'm wondering if it adds up to 1.2 million?
The cost is borne by the operator, Councilmember.
So you don't pay it all for any, all those complaints that, who pays for it specifically?
Sacred Aviation.
Well, they're paying for the complaint.
For the system, for the management system.
But there's a consultant. EDC is not paying for the consultant?
No, it comes through the, through the agreement.
Okay. What is your definition of tours? We have two kinds. We have those who are literally doing tourism and supposedly they're flying on the water. We never really actually know. I know you think that you're monitoring it. Don't forget, if you live near the water, it sucks. You can't sit on your balcony, you can't hear. So even though I was there, I was in the room with Nadler and de Blasio when that was cut. I know that, but it's still too noisy. What's the, how many between the tourism, which I call literally tourism, versus those flying that you apparently cannot control to the Hamptons? What's the difference in terms of numbers?
So from downtown, about 95% is just the tour flights.
Okay. The tour flights, meaning those that are tourism?
Tourism, yes, correct.
Okay. And then, but then those that are, how do you know out of what flights, what air, air heliports, the, going to the airport, going to the Hamptons are coming from? How many of those are coming out of New York City?
The total, we can monitor that. I don't know the number offhand, but I can, we can get back to that.
You can get, get back to us on that. Okay. I just want to finally say, this problem is horrific. It's not in every neighborhood, but it is something that we absolutely, if you want to be a, an administration that is responsive to New Yorkers, you would end those non-essential helicopter flights. People are beside themselves, beside themselves. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. Next up is Councilmember Aviles.
Thank you, Chairs, for this hearing. Thank you to the EDC team for being here. I, you know, cannot underscore enough what my colleagues are saying, that New Yorkers, we want a full ban on non-essential flights. So what I'm understanding from your testimony is that the EDC, who owns these two heliports, has no control over flights other than tour flights? Is that what you're suggesting?
Just, just, Councilmember, it's good to see you and thank you. I want to amend an answer that we made. We, we can work on a voluntary basis with the charter flights to amend routes if they are offensive. We can work with them to, we can't mandate per se, as we do with the tour flights, but we can work with the charters to improve routes and, and address issues.
So, so the EDC has no control over who lands and who leaves from its heliport?
Their general, you know, use heliports. And so they, we cannot restrict because they're public, they're public facilities, so we cannot restrict. What we can do with tour helicopters is reduce the number, reduce, regulate operating hours and number of flights.
So what is in this equation, what can the EDC control on these heliports?
The, the hours of opera-
Besides the tour flights?
Besides the, oh, besides, well, we can work with the tour, with the, with the charters, with the non-tour flights. You know, there are programs like, that the charters are able to do voluntary programs that would improve routes or would reduce particular flights that may be a nuisance. So we can certainly work with them at East 34th. So, we can certainly work with them at East 34th Street or downtown to amend those routes.
And why is it that the downtown heliport is operational or accepting flights through 10:00 PM at night?
It's open until 10:00. It's, the tour flights end at 7:00, but it, because it's a general use, those are the hours where we just know there may be flights that are coming in, whether they're emergency flights, whether they're, you know, police or media or any of those other kinds of flights.
Can you distinguish the flight differentials? Like, how much of that is nonessential versus essential that are using the heliport from the time of 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM?
Ninety-five percent of the flights from downtown are tour flights. 5% are other flights.
So, it definitely seems like this, the hour of operation is a critical element here. 10:00 PM is just way too late, and we want to restrict the usage here. Restricting the hour of, of operation is critical here.
The, the only, yes, but the only, the caveat is that we don't have tour flights past 7:00 PM.
All right. In terms of, I, in your testimony, you referenced one of my favorite topics, and it felt like a very strange addition to the topic at hand. So, I'd like you to clarify a little bit around why it's even in here and how these two are connected in terms of last mile facilities and the heliports.
Yes.
Can you, can you explain?
So, in our role, EDC is delegated responsibility over maritime facilities. And so, downtown Manhattan heliport, in addition to being an aviation facility, can also be used for maritime use. And one thing that we've been hearing from the industry is that there is demand for last mile freight service by water. And this, you know, specifically is meant to address, you know, the last mile centers that have been built in your district and other districts around the city in a way that we can use the back door to bring freight from, say, your district to Manhattan instead of by truck. And what we were very pleased to see in the response to the RFP was that there were responses that were very robust towards that goal.
So, the heliport will be used as a last mile freight?
That is our goal.
Interesting. Okay, we'll have to talk, talk more about my favorite topic. One last question. In terms of, you mentioned, in terms of green helicopters, more rapidly adopting greener technology, what does that specifically look like? Are we talking about a 10-year horizon? And what's the investment scale? Like, honestly, what does that mean? Because for us, it means nothing, because the market is not there, and I don't think folks are investing.
Well, one thing that we specified in the RFP was that we were looking for operators who can bring in those types of helicopters, electric helicopters, more rapidly. And the good news is it's sound-
What does that mean specifically? Bring in green helicopters?
Meaning that-
Does that mean five helicopters? What does that mean specifically?
At this, at this point, I think it would be a, you know, a phasing in of more of these types of aircraft. Right now, you know, we are talking to companies that are developing and building those, those types of aircraft. I think this is such a large market. We have a market presence, obviously, in New York City, that we would hope that because of that power, we would be able to, you know, set the right table for more investment in greener helicopters. And I think what we've done with the RFP is really set the bar for that.
So, what's the scale, the scope of this? I'm trying to, I'm trying to get some texture here. Like, are we talking about generally, is it 2,000 helicopters? And we're talking about two of the 2,000? What's the scale and scope of the feasibility?
That's, I, I would, I will say that, excited to give you the answer, don't have the answer right now because it's part of the RFP process, but we'll, we will get back to you with an answer. Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a quick follow-up, and I also want to acknowledge Councilmember Gennaro has been here this whole time, but I forgot to acknowledge you.
You're welcome.
Just really quickly, why can't, why can we regulate the tourism flights but not others? Like, do they have a certain designation? Is there a certain ruling? Are they, yeah, can you just clarify that?
Because they stay within the limits of New York City, so they originate and, their flights originate and end with, at the downtown heliport. They don't cross boundaries. And there's also just sort of by mutual convention, when the tour flights moved from East 30th Street, I'm sorry, from West 30th Street to downtown in 2008, that whole, the whole industry moved to downtown.
Okay, so, it's solely be, we have more oversight and regulation of the tourism flights solely because they stay within the five borough radius?
Mm-hmm, yes, because they're-
So, why can't we fully ban New Jersey flights from coming over into our five borough radius?
Because it's crossing state boundaries. It's federally, then, then the federal rules are-
To that, so in terms of, you know, these commuter flights that are coming from JFK, of which it's a significant amount, is my understanding, they are not crossing boundaries. Why can't we regulate those?
Those are classic-
Those are clearly nonessential flights to, you know?
Those, and those are, because they're going between two different points, they're regulated differently. The federal regulations, the FAA has different regulations for those kinds of flights. Tourist flights, non, or, you know, discretionary flights take off and land at the same point.
So, it would be great if you offered the council a clear plan of advocacy and what, what your timeline and plan of action is in terms of engagement with the FAA, and what does that clearly look like over this next year? Because I, I don't think we, we see it very clearly, what is happening and what is being advocated for and with what rigor, quite frankly, given the scale and scope of the problem. And just to end, we must ban nonessential flights. As a waterfront community, it is absurd what is happening here for a million-dollar return on investment. Quite frankly, if, if the EDC thinks that that is a good management of assets, I, I think we have bigger problems that we need to address. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, you took my next question right out of my mouth, so thank you so much for that. And, and any feedback you folks can give us in regards to that would be great. Next up is Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you so much, and I want to thank Chairs Farias and Abreu for their leadership here and my colleagues, who I think have been thoughtful in elaborating the constituent concerns that we are often receiving. I don't represent Lower Manhattan. I represent Upper Manhattan. And although maybe the complaints aren't as frequent as we see our colleagues on the Upper West Side, parts of Brooklyn, and the lower parts of Manhattan, we do and are continuing to see an increased pattern of helicopter noise and, and, you know, routes going all the way up to Upper Manhattan and parts of the Bronx. And so, I want to ask, first of all, why the increase from what, at least the increase in complaints we're getting seems to reflect that there's an increase in routes or patterns that are leading up to Upper Manhattan? And so, I want to know if there's a specific reason for that, other than viewing our beautiful parks in Upper Manhattan?
Thank you, Councilmember. The, probably what you're seeing is an uptick in just, there is a route that run, that runs over the Bronx and down the Hudson River. That's federally, one of the federally controlled routes. And probably what you're seeing is an increase due to just economic recovery. And those are not tourist helicopters from, per se, but, but most likely, that's why you're seeing an uptick.
So, what type of helicopters are there?
They're probably charters or private helicopters, but they can also be, they could also be media helicopters as well, or?
Does the EDC regulate the routes? So, if a helicopter veers off a route, there is no tracking of that?
If it is a tour flight originating at downtown Manhattan helicopter, heliport, we regulate those flights. And we can, we can track and we can issue violations, but those are the only ones that we have control of.
And what do the violations look like?
Well, you get a warning for your first violation, flying over land or doing something unsafe, and then generally, if you do it again, you get, there's a $1,000 fine.
So, I would suggest you eliminate the warning and go straight to the fine. You know, drivers don't get warnings. They get stopped for speeding and they get a ticket. And so, I think when it comes to enforcement, we have to make sure that we are not lax on that portion of it, because we don't want to encourage behavior that puts New Yorkers' quality of life at, or their lives in general, at risk. And then, the other question that I had was regarding the federal aviation. So, I, I think Councilmember Brewer's concerns or comments about New Jersey are, are on point. In my district, I have the Upper Manhattan Port Authority, and we are often in communication with the New Jersey side around the George Washington Bridge. So, I wonder why there isn't some sort of task force or some sort of, you know, coalition or group that meets regularly on these types of issues with county officials and, you know, local officials as well?
There, there had been one, and we were members of it. We're certainly open to participate in that type of task force.
And who would have to convene that type of task force? Would, would it be the, the federal government, the state government, town governments? Who, who could create such an entity?
I think, Councilmember, that it, it really could be any of those entities, right? It's really about the, having the open conversation and having the dialogue. I think from, from our perspective, it's more about having the right players in the room and ensuring that the jurisdictions are clear, the rules are clear. And so, I, while I, I don't think one of these has been convened recently, and I'm, I'm looking to Andrew because he's been at EDC longer than I have, you know, I think one of the key pieces of feedback we're taking away from today is that it's time to, to revisit that level of engagement. And I think it's clear, you know, revisiting the, the reporting structure and, and other items to ensure that, you know, we're being clear and transparent about these issues.
So, could EDC proactively convene?
I mean, we could proactively start engaging with folks, certainly, and, and whether that, you know, however that looks like, whether that is us convening a task force versus us having, you know, regular conversations, we can certainly kickstart that process.
Yeah, I think that would be great, and I think you have some colleagues here that would be more than interested in, in being part of something like that.
The former Manhattan Borough President had a very effective task force.
Very strong feeling about this, yes.
Thank you for-
Philip Cohen, Councilmember, New Jersey, has the coalition ready.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Gail.
So, there is a heliport on 34th Street on the West Side, and it is controlled by the governor and by you, the mayor. Everyone wants to get rid of a heliport in a park. What are you doing to work with the governor? The, I'm probably talking out of turn, but Hudson River Park Trust is willing to get rid of it. They would lose 1.7 million per year. They're happy to do it. Happy might be too strong a word. They're willing to do it. What are we doing to get rid of that heliport in a park?
To respond to that, the West 30th heliport, we have been involved in efforts that you're describing. We've talked about planning, different, reciting of that heliport, and we're happy to participate in those conversations. But there hasn't been much coming to us. I'll be, I'll be honest about that heliport and changes.
I wrote a letter a while ago. Should I write another one? You need to talk to the governor's office, talk to the folks at the Hudson River Park Trust, Maureen Doyle, and so on. And again, when you're standing in a park and you have idling and helicopters taking off constantly, I'm not saying that they're doing anything wrong. They're living within the guidelines of the heliport. But it's, you can't have a heliport in a park. It's craziness. So, you'll, can I have your word that you will, if asked, that's the only way to do it okay, convene some conversations with the other parties to discuss this topic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And seeing no other members here with questions, we will move over to public testimony. I do just want to reiterate, oh, I want to thank EDC and the admin for coming today and for your testimony. We really appreciate it, especially answering all of our tough questions and really showing us that you're ready and willing to collaborate on, on a lot of the items that we brought up today. So, thank you. I do want to stress to the public that we're giving you three minutes, and that is a lot of time. We hope you submitted written testimony. You do not need to read exactly what you wrote, but please express your sentiment within three minutes, because I have a lot of people up for public testimony, and we want to get to everyone. And I don't want to have to pay rent for living in City Hall for today's testimony. So, we want to get through it all, and I'll turn it over to our moderator.
Thank you, Chair. As the Chair mentioned, we'll now turn to public testimony. As she mentioned, due to the large number of public participants at today's hearing, each panelist will be given three minutes to speak. If you are testifying in person, please come to the dais when your name is called and wait for your turn to speak. For panelists who are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you on Zoom, and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. The first panelist will be Andrew Rosenthal, Graham Van Corf, and Katia Veraza. Please come to the dais to give your testimony. Mr. Rosenthal, you may begin when ready.
And charter flights. We do not mean police, military, news, or medical flights. Helicopters have created many serious problems for the citizens of New York City. The numerous and regular fatal crashes, the negative impacts of noise on the quality of life, health, and cognitive abilities of all New Yorkers, especially children and environmental justice communities, are well documented. Currently, there are approximately 70,000 nonessential helicopter flights over New York City each year. That number will continue to grow if we let it. That is approximately 200 flights per day. Imagine if your phone rang 200 times each day. One of the current operators at DMH just placed an order for 100 single-person helicopters that they intend to rent to anyone who has taken a one-hour course. What could go wrong with 100 people at a bachelor or bachelorette party flying around our skies? It is abundantly clear that New Yorkers want action to eliminate these nonessential flights. Complaints to 311 have skyrocketed over the last few years, even though New York City has made it much harder to report, and the fact that most people stop filing complaints when they realize it accomplishes little. The FAA has ultimate jurisdiction over the skies of New York City, but it does not have sole jurisdiction over the lands such as the downtown Manhattan heliport and the East 34th Street heliport. The city council can and must act to reduce the negative impacts of nonessential helicopters. While more action is required, leaders have taken numerous steps to address this problem. Mayor Giuliani shut down the East 60th Street heliport in 1997. The city has closed the East 34th Street heliport on weekends. In 2016, the city capped the number of tourist flights allowed from city-owned heliports and banned tourist flights on Sunday. Out of 66 million tourists who visit New York City annually, less than 1 in 1,000 takes a helicopter trip. These helicopters siphon off tourist dollars that could be spent on many other attractions, such as the Circle Line or any of the magnificent observation decks we have in the city. The aviation industry will tell you that no action is needed, as they will soon have quiet helicopters, e. v. tals. These craft are many years, if not a decade, away from certification to fly over the most densely populated area of the country. Many of the current helicopters flying over New York are decades old and will be flying decades from now if we let them. We implore the city council to take the following steps. Close the two city-owned heliports to nonessential flights this year. The current contracts are concession agreements that can be canceled from the city at will in 30 days or less. The flights will not just- The flights will not just move to West Thirty Street that is operating at or near capacity as set by a binding legal settlement. Work with the mayor and governor to close West Thirty Street heliport, which is currently operating just inches from the busiest bike and pedestrian path in North America. Ban EVTOLs from taking off or landing anywhere in New York City until the technology is proven safe and quiet. And in closing, many problems facing New York are very hard or expensive to solve. This problem could be solved.
Thank you for your testimony.
Yeah, this problem could be solved overnight with essentially no cost to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Mr. Van Corf, you may begin when ready.
Good morning, Chairs and the members of the committee. I'm here today on behalf of Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso and Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine to express their commitment to ridding our city's skies of nonessential helicopter travel. Helicopters are simply not necessary for either tourism or commuting, and their outsized impacts on noise and air pollution far outweigh any convenience they may provide. Even according to the helicopter industry, the noise that helicopters generate flying at 500 or even 1,000 feet over the city is well within the range considered dangerous by the Hearing Health Foundation. With thousands of nonessential helicopter trips around New York City every week, it's no wonder that New Yorkers submitted approximately 26,000 helicopter noise complaints to 3-on-1 last year. This noise is disruptive to residents who live along flight paths, including much of Manhattan and Brooklyn's waterfronts, as well as north and central Brooklyn along the JFK routes. And the constant exposure can cause health impacts such as stress and anxiety in addition to quality of life issues. We appreciate the changes that the city has already implemented on the helicopter tourism industry, such as reducing the number of tourist flights and restricting flight patterns to over-the-waterways. However, the presence of tourist helicopters along our waterfronts is still extremely disruptive. Among other issues, the noise negatively impacts the experience for residents and tourists enjoying relaxation in our city's open spaces, especially Riverside Park, Hudson River Park, Battery Park, and Brooklyn Bridge Park, where the noise from tourist helicopters is constant. New Yorkers have invested billions of public dollars into supporting and improving these parks only to have their enjoyment of them diminished. Meanwhile, flights originating in New Jersey plague Manhattan communities and users of Central Park, and commuter flights to the airports in the Hamptons continue over Prospect Park and Brooklyn's residential neighborhoods unchecked. Yet noise pollution is not the only issue, and so proposed regulations to noise levels only address part of the problem. Recent reports indicate that commuter helicopters use about 43 to 88 gallons of fuel per hour, depending on the model, which is significantly more than what an average car uses per hour. Again, with thousands of nonessential trips every day, the tourist and commuter helicopter industry is a major source of air pollution in our city. Allowing this to continue runs counter to the city's stated goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 80% from 2005 levels and developing strategies to achieve carbon neutrality by 2050. We are aware that this issue requires a regional solution with many levels of government at the table. The most effective solution would be for the Federal Aviation Administration to ban nonessential helicopter travel from New York City's airspace as outlined in Councilmember Brewer's Resolution 291. This would address concerns from NYC EDC that an NYC-only ban will push more traffic to helicopters in New Jersey, which have less restrictive regulations. In a letter sent to us, a letter to us sent earlier this year, NYC EDC President Andrew Kimball outlined the 2016 collaborative effort between NYC EDC, the helicopter industry, the downtown Manhattan heliport operator, and tour flight companies, which resulted in updated regulations. They did it before. They can do it again. In the meantime, we must work with the tools that we have at our disposal. That is why we support Councilmember Wrestler's Intro 551, which would ban nonessential helicopters from operating at city-owned heliports for all the reasons outlined. The city should not be supporting this industry in its current form, notably the concession license agreements. Kind of one more minute, please. That allow helicopter operators to use the city's heliports do not require a cause for termination. In conclusion, we don't believe our constituents should have to suffer from noise or air pollution for another day just so tourists can view the city from above or so commuters can pay over $1,000 to get to the Hamptons faster. Until such time as the helicopter industry can sufficiently demonstrate that it can operate in a way that does not disrupt residents' quality of life, does not pose a threat to public health, and does not use fossil fuels that result in carbon emissions, we support a ban of nonessential flights from our city's heliports. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Our offices look forward to working with the council and any other necessary partners to get a solution.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate. If you hear it, wrap it up. I will begin to be rude, and I don't want to. Thank you, Councilmember Brayden, for jumping in these times. Next up, we have Ms. Shane. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry about that. Katia Veraza. My apologies.
There you go. All right. Hello, and thank you, members of the Committee on Economic Development and State and Federal Legislation, for convening this oversight hearing today. My name is Katia Veraza, and I am the manager of Government Affairs and Regional Relations for the Helicopter Association, for Helicopter Association International. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the vertical flight industry today. For more than 70 years, HAI has provided support, services, and set the industry's safety guidelines for the international helicopter community. We leverage, innovate, advocate, and expand the unique operational abilities of vertical flight on behalf of our members and for the benefit of our society. Our members perform a variety of helicopter services across the country that help save lives, serve, and protect our country. Justice helicopter services are extremely important across the nation. They are also part of the vast, complex systems of transportation that connect New York City to the global economy. The city's three public-use heliports constitute an aviation system that supports the city's economy, emergency services, and security network. The three heliports provide valuable revenue and employment to the city. Heliports are used by small businesses that provide a variety of high-paying jobs to New Yorkers in all five boroughs. Maintaining all heliports will reinforce the enhanced attractiveness of Manhattan as allocation for major corporate tenants and small businesses. It is important to recognize that the rapid and efficient flow of people in and out of New York City requires multiple modes and services that can meet the time requirements of different industries. Helicopters are essential for those time-sensitive industries that seek to avoid the uncertain patterns of congestion caused by surface transportation. And for the same reason, they are essential for emergency uses. Government agencies use helicopters to manage all types of emergencies, monitor the city's airspace, and gather information. As observed during the pandemic, helicopters played an essential role in the city's effort to combat the virus, helping hospitals provide air medical transport and other critical services. The pandemic proved that helicopters are irreplaceable when it comes to saving lives. Now, we understand that noise is a common concern associated with heliports. Therefore, ATI constantly seeks to forge relationships between communities and helicopter operators. Together, we focus on establishing noise mitigation techniques and innovating solutions to fly neighborly. Our industry is bringing innovative technologies such as AM and EVTOL to improve community compatibility and overall accessibility. Technology such as EVTOL will revolutionize transportation and generate good-quality jobs. Investment in AM infrastructure will support the city's comprehensive efforts to meet the transportation needs of tomorrow. We firmly believe that Manhattan's heliports are a critical component of New York's transportation networks and support the operation of the city's businesses and the growth of this economy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, I'd like to call Mary R. Shane, Kenneth Lay, Daniel Watts, and James Boyd. And I'd also like to acknowledge Councilmember Salamanca, who's joining us today. I just want to do one call for Mary Shane. Are you virtual or just not present? Great. So Kenneth, whenever you're ready, you can begin.
Good morning. Members of the Council Committee on Economic Development, I'm giving this testimony regarding New York City's heliport operations to urge the council to abolish the use of New York City public heliports for nonessential helicopter flights. I live in Carroll Gardens, where my neighbors and I now experience upwards of 30 low-flying helicopter flights directly overhead every single day. The flights operate from around 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on most days. They're definitely loud. Walkers in the street in the area are forced to stop talking to one another when a helicopter passes overhead. The noise can be heard throughout any building in the area on any floor, even if all the windows are closed. I'm routinely awakened by these flights, and my apartment building, which is well-constructed and well-maintained, often vibrates when these flights pass overhead. After some investigatory work using publicly available flight tracking information, I determined that nearly all of these flights over my home, over 95%, are nonessential commuter flights ferrying people to and from the three publicly-owned Manhattan heliports, Pier Six, East Thirty Fourth Street, and West Thirty Street. Most flights are going towards or coming from JFK or the Hamptons. The problem is not only confined to Carroll Gardens and surrounding areas. Some of New York's finest parks, including Central Park, Brooklyn Bridge Park, Governor's Island, Liberty Island, et cetera, are constantly besieged by the den of tourist and commuter helicopters. I understand that while the West Thirty Street heliport is jointly operated by the city and the state of New York, the two heliports on the east side of Manhattan are entirely under the city's jurisdiction. I find it unconscionable that the city permits the use of its heliports for unnecessary tourism commuter flights. Not only is the nuisance extreme, but it's dangerous to have low-flying helicopters traveling regularly over densely populated areas of Brooklyn, Manhattan, and Queens. A helicopter crashed near the East River in 2018, another one in Manhattan in 2019. What if such a crash were to occur in Brooklyn on the way to JFK? Dozens would be injured or killed, not to mention severe property damage, legal costs, et cetera. Such a crash, what it would cause. I will also note that as the climate crisis accelerates, unnecessary helicopter flights, which produce three or five times more emissions than a diesel car, are clearly incompatible with emissions reduction's goals we must achieve to combat global warming. New York City is already spending millions on climate resiliency. Why does it turn around and tolerate the very behaviors requiring such expenditures in the first place? Finally, I would like to inform the council that over the past eight months, I've submitted over 150 noise complaints by the 3-on-1 system to EDC. None of them have been looked into or processed in any way. Despite an SLA of 10 days, every one of them remains in progress. The city may not be able to regulate its airspace, but it can absolutely regulate whom it uses heliports. I urge the council to consider the serious environmental health, safety, and quality of life impacts permitting commuter and tourism flights and public heliports. These helicopters are endangering all of us, harming our environment, and ruining our quality of life for very little benefit except to the very wealthy who can afford such flights. Please help all of us who are suffering every day from the deleterious impacts of these flights by banning them. Thank you.
I very much thank you for your testimony and keep so many complaints and having faith in the system.
I just wanted to ask if you, by any chance, have the 3-on-1 complaints logged? If you can send them to my office?
I have every one.
So I can look into them? That'd be great. Thank you. Daniel Watts?
Can I use that microphone there? Let's just turn it on. How about that? That's better? All right. Super. My name is Daniel Watts. I'm a Brooklyn resident. Thank you very much, Chairperson Farias and Chairperson Abreu and all of, all of you who are participating. I appreciate your time. Thank you in particular for providing me with the opportunity to testify regarding New York City's heliport operations. I have read the Commercial Air Tour Voluntary Agreement between the National Park Service, the FAA, and the commercial air tour operators. And that agreement recognizes that helicopter operations, quote, "impact the acoustic and visual experience of visitors." And the agreement aims to, quote, "reduce potential disturbances caused by commercial air tours." The agreement also points to the risk of terrorist activity, which calls for a higher level of helicopter safety around the parks. It's the city council's responsibility to protect New York City residents in the same way that the National Park Service is protecting its parks. The city council should protect New Yorkers from the constant and overwhelming noise from nonessential helicopter traffic and from the potential of a terrorist attack in the heart of our city. I've been a resident of Brooklyn since 1971, and I have an office in downtown Manhattan. The noise from nonessential helicopter flights is unending and deafening for me and for all residents, workers, students, parkgoers, and visitors, whether on the Brooklyn waterfront, the Brooklyn Bridge, Lower Manhattan, the west side of Manhattan, or District 11 in the Bronx. There is no excuse for it. The harm caused by nonessential helicopters vastly outweighs the paltry fees earned by the city and the enjoyment of the few privileged tourists who take the flights. Please take the obvious and simple step of ending the concession for tourist helicopters at the downtown Manhattan heliport. All the other city heliports no longer allow these flights, and these nonessential flights constitute the vast majority of all helicopter flights in our airspace. Taking this step will be a major improvement in the quality of life in our great city.
Thank you. I will now call up, oh, I'm sorry, James, James Boyd. I'm so sorry about that. I'm already jumping ahead. Please give us your testimony.
Fellow citizens, the Hudson River Park Trust VIP heliport at West Thirty Street can no longer exist in a healthier, safer, fairer New York and should be closed immediately. For 24 years, New Yorkers have asked for its closure, and the trust refuses. Any helicopter use should be out of the question during the train wreck of our climate crisis. The petty pleasure of helicopter tourism and the toxic privilege of private helicopter use are cynical entitlements hardly essential for economic development. The Hudson River Park Trust claims environmental stewardship while it profits from the corrupt sale of toxic privilege to wealth at its elite heliport in our park, a virtual chain-link gas chamber spewing deadly air and noise pollution. In 2007, New Yorkers won a comprehensive New York Supreme Court settlement against, against the trust, mandating the heliport's complete closure by 2014. As a result of that citizen's action, the trust ended tourist flights out of West Thirty. Although the trust does not entertain questions or comments from the public, I organized the single-public discussion in 24 years with the trust about their heliport at a CB4 meeting in June 2021. Eighteen months later, the public and press cannot contact the trust directly at all. The New York City Council does have contact with trust members and should demand that they honor the 2007 settlement by publicly announcing the immediate closure of the West Thirty Street heliport. The trust claims it has no jurisdiction to close their own franchise. This is disingenuous considering that the successful settlement, brought directly against the trust, forced them to at least end tourist flights. The trust does not and cannot possibly ensure the safety of this very dangerous franchise. While the trust profits from wealth's flights, nothing can safeguard citizens from their incessant air and noise pollution or from crashes like 2019's at the heliport. It is an open terrorist target with no TSA screening, has an 8,000-gallon jet fuel tank on the tarmac leaking runoff into the Hudson, up to 20 chauffeured SUVs illegally idling for hours in the parking lot. The reasons for closure are so many and so clear that only wealth's influence can explain the trust's irresponsible evasion of its essential promise, environmental stewardship. Only its donor class uses heliports to commute to private estates far from public parks. Five million daily New York City subway riders do not use helicopters. No one needs private aviation. Please do not believe the lobbying about electric helicopters. They will be produced in fossil fuel manufacturing plants in poorer countries using wage labor. And the toxic mining required for electric batteries is extremely polluting and involves child labor. Thank you.
Thank you all for your testimony. I would like to call up Michael Popper, Charles Kamnoff, John Ost, and Ashwin Padmanavan. I hope I said that correctly. If not, I apologize. I'll give him one more second. Okay, you can begin.
My name is Mike Popper. I live in Carroll Gardens, as Kenneth, as well. I've been there for 32 years. I wrote a nice little speech, but I'm gonna not bother to give it. I want to speak to a couple of points that came up today.
I need to turn on your microphone.
I want to speak to a couple of points that came up today?
No?
It was on. Anyway, here we go. Complaint system. Helicopters have been going over my home for years now, and the frequency has grown substantially. These are commuter flights. They're going to JFK. I called 311 several times in June of 2021. Was given a nice number, told that they would get back to me within 10 days. They never did. Who wants to make a call like that each time it happens? You know, it doesn't take long to figure out if no one's gonna respond to you, you're gonna stop. gonna stop. So what do I do? I look at the Blade site. Now Blade is the commuter operator. They have a beautiful little website, nice map. Their planes supposedly go down the Upper Bay, I think it's called, through the Arizona Narrows, Lower Bay, out to JFK. No way. Their brochure is a lie. Those things come over my house on a regular schedule, low, loud, and nasty. So what can I do? Nothing. But I can implore you to put an end to the leases, the operating rights for these people to land. That seems to be the easy switch, the turn-on, and I'd like you to do it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Ashwin?
Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Ashwin Padmanavan. I'm a resident of Northern Battery Park City. A lot has been said already in my testimony, so I'll only say the things that have not been said. My kids are woken up by helicopters every morning. The apartment shakes. 6:30 without fail, a shitty commuter helicopter from one of the airports headed to West 30th, by the way. I love the self-congratulatory note of, you know, reducing the cap to 30,000, but that is just ridiculous. 30,000 is two flight paths, 60,000, 200 working days. That's 300 flights a day, 10 hours, one flight every two minutes. That's just the tourists from the downtown heliport. Every two minutes. Our place, every 30 seconds, there's a helicopter. Every 30 seconds. You can't, we've stopped using the park, we've stopped family picnics, we've not gone to Governor's Island. We pray for foggy, dry days, which are the only days you can use the park. And this is Rockefeller Park. This is all of Hudson River Park. This is all of the Brooklyn waterfront. I mean, I moved here from London. I've been here 12 years. This is the most bizarre thing I have seen. For eight million New Yorkers to suffer, for what? I just, I just don't get it. I've seen my daughter and her friends trying to play soccer and not able to call out to someone 10 feet away because there's a chopper overhead. Always. Just go there right now. It's always there. This is, I mean, I don't understand this debate, honestly. And yes, you know, we live in a messy democracy, but this is ridiculous. This doesn't address even economic arguments. So please, stop them. Do something.
I appreciate your testimony, and I do want to vocalize, like, this hearing has happened and is happening today because of the conversations I've been having, because of the people coming into each of our offices and the complaints. We want to hear from folks like you to better understand how we need to push harder. And so I just want to say thank you for showing up, for yourself, for New Yorkers, for your kids, for the soccer team. It's appreciated. You know, we're gonna work, from this day on forward, we're gonna work harder on trying to find mitigations and work towards the bills that we have. I will now call up, thank you both. I'll try one more time, just in case, Charles Commonoff and John Ost. And if there's anyone here that has not been called up to give public testimony, please raise your hand, notify me. If not, we're going to move towards the virtual testimony that we have. Sure, what's your name? You can come up? Yes, you can come give public testimony. You're the one. I'm calling you up. Sure, and just state your name before you begin for the record, okay?
My name is Vern Simmer. Can you hear me? I'm a recent member of Stop the Chop. And I probably can't add anything more than Andrew said, but I am concerned about the noise and air pollution and the impact of the amount of fuel that I have to use proportional to the community. It's outrageous. We have to get rid of fossil fuels anyway. And I'm concerned about quiet helicopters in the future. I just, I'm not sure that that'll solve the problem, even, that'll just make noise that maybe humans might not be sensitive to it. You still have change in frequency of the air, which can be damaging, especially, I haven't heard any animals' testimony today, so we need a diverse environment, especially New York City. And Central Park is sort of a haven for that. And in my experience, it has been interrupted, any kind of a restful and healing experience, which nature can do immediately. And that is true vibrationally. You can pick up the vibrations of other people even. As soon as you step from the park, you get to the buildings and the cement, your vibe changes completely. And so the vibration of a helicopter that might not be as loud, it still gives the vibration of technology that is adverse to our physiological systems. And I question also the automated systems working in the hospital systems under biomedical engineering for 17 years in New York City hospitals. Automated systems, just things more complicated, and people who use them don't understand them. Like if you have a temperature monitored automatically, people don't know the concept of whether it's the test, what the alarm is for even. So I don't have confidence in just increasing technology also. And in experience, a shamanistic experience in the park, I have had a bird come up to me to try to give information. They could tell that I'm a hearing person. Blew over my head, direct, just right over twice, and then did a dance for way over two or three minutes that you're allowing here. They wanted my attention. And soon after that, bike riders went quickly, without electric bikes, without helmets, without looking at who's in the crossway, and an elderly woman was saying, "Someone should talk to the officials." So I think it is a message that their airspace will be affected by bird flights, especially water, even fighting over water. And so I really want to ban completely unessential helicopter use completely. That's just the thing to do, and it's within your power, I think.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We're now going to move to the public testimony, public virtual testimony. I'd like to call Eric Eisenberg, Steve Anderson, and Melody Bryant. Eric, you can go when you are ready. Time has begun? Eric Eisenberg, you're unmuted, but we're calling you for testimony. Okay, so we're gonna move on from Eric until he's actually ready. I'm gonna call up Steve Anderson. You can begin.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Well, thank you. My name is Steve Anderson, and I am a 40-year resident of the Upper West Side, and I serve as the president of the Theodore Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association and the Upper West Side Coalition and Block Association and community groups. Let me be brief and clear. There's lots of details and data, but council members and my fellow New Yorkers, let's keep it real. This situation is simply nuts. 60,000 or 30,000 flights and almost all unnecessary. The level of helicopter activity is an aerial assault on our community, unacceptable harassment, and of course, it must be curtailed. And this is a situation that demands comprehensive attention, timely attention, by the council and in coordination with state and federal agencies. Let's talk about what can be done, not what we haven't been able to do. This is not about visitors to our city. It looks and sounds all too often like we're under attack. Stop this aerial bombardment, is what I said. Leave the skies for those aiding people in distress, seeking to increase security and providing news reporting about events occurring within our city. We did not sign up for this, this incessant harassment. It is as if we have been taken hostage on a never-ending no-doors chopper nightmare. Close the doors, New York City Council. End this bad trip. Special thanks to all who have worked so hard in this cause, especially the Stop the Chop Coalition and my own council member, Gail Brewer. It's now up to you, New York City Council. Join this movement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next, we'll hear from Melody Bryant, followed by Alexis Arkos Duntov, and then Arlene Bronzhaft. Melody Bryant, you can begin when the sergeants call time.
Time has begun?
You can hear me, yes?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Melody Bryant, so thank you for taking my testimony today. Helicopters over our parks, our adjacent islands, our botanical gardens, our waterfronts have made both rivers and their adjoining parks unlivable. We do not need a new operator of these heliports. We need their use to be drastically reduced to emergency and hospital uses, not expanded for waterborne freight or any other purposes. No cities in Europe have these, and New Yorkers deserve better. Air tourism is not a feta company, as NYEDC would have us believe. And if, by the way, anyone really wants a great overhead view of New York City, it would behoove tourists and residents of New York to visit the Queens Museum Panorama. It is fantastic. You'll find your own house there. The industry knows full well what it's doing. These heliports stink up our greenways and promenades. The wind carries the smell of benzene up and down the waterfront, and electric helicopters are noisy. To say otherwise is an outright lie. Electric helicopters on the rivers or overland will be noisy harassment. As for reporting, I understand the app may be better, but where we used to be able to report on 3-1-1, we are now forced to report to the two organizations which are pro-business or pro-aviation, the NYEDC or the FAA. I call on the city to reinstate straight-up 3-1-1 helicopter complaints where our comments are not analyzed by the very organizations which have an interest in ignoring them. I personally have given up reporting because of this. Furthermore, the NYEDC and FAA will never be collaborators with New Yorkers that their business is harassing. To call them that is disingenuous at best. These heliports are used and sometimes abused by the NYPD, which Flight Radar 24 shows often joy rides over us and harasses free speech protests like Black Lives Matter and FDNY. They are used by news organizations which could easily be handled collectively and most efficiently by drones. They are used for wealthy commuters, and others will address this inequity in tour flights. But clearly, the biggest issue was the tour flights. Even if all of these flights keep to the rivers, they make the promenades along their rivers a punishing experience. We can't go to them anymore if we want any peace. I visited the Brooklyn waterfront to see an art exhibit, and I agree with Lincoln Russell. The din of helicopters idling and circling the Brooklyn Bridge literally drove us out. And the same goes for the rivers further down in Manhattan. Like, electric helicopters won't change this. I call on the city to close these heliports to nonessential flights, including news organization flights which can be placed by drones, to drastically reduce NYPD and FDNY flights, and to refuse any permits for last-mile freight use. Truly, emergency and hospital uses are the only ones that should be allowed. Instead of these punishing heliports, New Yorkers and tourists could have hockey rinks, roller rinks, more parkland for people and dogs, gardens, restaurants, event spaces, and other more creative and quieter, safer uses. Please give us back our waterfronts and our parklands as refuge from daily commerce. Let us once again have places to walk, think, dream, and have a conversation in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Next, we'll hear from Alexis Arkos Duntov, followed by Arlene Bronzhaft and Beth Browdy. Alexis Arkos Duntov, you can begin when the sergeants call time.
Time has begun?
Hi, actually, this is Roger Manning. For some reason, the email link that I got makes my name show up as Alexis. My name is Roger Manning. I'm from the metro area Governor's Island Coalition. And Governor's Island, in the middle of New York Harbor, is a unique public space with a historic district, national monument, a high school, parklands, and many arts and environmental projects. Sightseeing helicopter noise seriously impacts the island on a daily basis, particularly due to the peacefulness of the island. The overhead traffic has been described as soul-crushing. Nearly all the helicopters affecting Governor's Island are sightseeing helicopters. The bulk of the loudest flights come from Manhattan, and of course, there are many tours coming from New Jersey as well. Rooting over water doesn't help in the East River and Buttermilk Channel, which separates Brooklyn from Governor's Island, because those are very narrow. It's practically, the flights are practically overland in those areas. It should be noted that most of Governor's Island users are not aware of 3-1-1 reporting for helicopters, which might explain lower complaints from that area. Limiting to daytime hours over Governor's Island doesn't work at all, because that's when Governor's Island is most active, particularly with the high school. And the tour flights do not end at 7:00 PM, and Sundays are inundated with sightseeing helicopters. Councilmember Brewer is correct. The only answer is eliminating unessential helicopter flights in New York City via Congressman's, Congressman, Congressperson Nadler's bill. A New York City Audubon member, by the way, is doing a study regarding helicopters' effect on birds. Hope to see that at some point. Magic has a new YouTube video series called Choppers Per Hour, and the statement is being, a written copy of the statement is being submitted. There'll be links in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Next, we'll hear from Arlene Bronzhaft, followed by Beth Browdy and Deborah LaPadua.
Arlene Bronzhaft.
Go ahead, Arlene.
You can hear me?
Yep. You can begin. Yes.
Thank you. I'm a professor emeritus of the City University of New York, and I also serve on the board of Grow NYC, overseeing its noise activities. I do research and write on the adverse impacts of noise on mental and physical health. I also speak internationally on the noise pollution. Noise pollution damages our health. Let's use the correct word. We talk about quality of life, but what that means is we're not living a healthy lifestyle. We cannot enjoy our backyards, our patios, our parks. We cannot sleep because of noise intrusions, and it diminishes our ability to engage in normal activities that are needed for decent quality of life, a decent health. Furthermore, noise has shown to increase stress, cause loss of sleep, lead to physiological disorders, and yes, it can lead to cardiovascular disorders and an increase in admissions to hospitals for these disorders. The literature is plentiful. In my written statement, I attached citations to the literature. What is failing is that the policy What is failing is that the policy and the actions to reduce noise lag behind. We know what to do about it. I heard Councilwoman Gail Brewer and Ms. Rosenthal speak to it. We know what to do. We just haven't had the will to do it. Noise is a health hazard. Noise diminishes the ability of our children to learn in schools exposed to noise, and my research on that was the landmark research conducted over forty years ago. So I want to put this straight to the council. Should you need my assistance, you can always personally contact me. You can go to AOL, Google, get the articles that I've written, and they are readily accessible. But let me add another point. In hearing EDC talk, I heard them say they react to the complaints. They do take action, but they didn't specify the actions, and they didn't do one other thing. Did these actions lead to a reduction? Did they do the adequate studies? Yes, I'm an academic. Yes, I've taught statistics. And I know in the movie Jerry Maguire, it said, "Show me the money." I would say, "Show me the data that has definitely indicated." Thank you very much, and should you need my personal assistance, please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bronzhaft. Next, we'll hear from Beth Browdy, followed by Deborah Lepadua, and then Elizabeth Chow. Beth Browdy, you may begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Hi. My name is Beth Browdy, and I am a perfect case study for Arlene. I live half a block from Central Park on 85th Street, and I, although I have a small apartment, I'm very lucky to have a large private garden, which I have tended for almost thirty years from being a dump to being this beautiful respite. But over the past three years, helicopter traffic has become a constant. Rarely do we have more than five to ten minutes respite from the noise, and it is a huge stressor. It disrupts my train of thought when I'm working. During the summer, I couldn't take a work call from the garden without wearing noise-canceling headphones. And at the end of the day, especially on Fridays, I can't sit in the garden and relax because the noise is nonstop, and it is harming my physical and mental health. It raises my blood pressure. It makes me constantly on edge. And then, the last time I went to do the one stress reliever that I love the most, running, I was running on Hudson River Park, and it was like running in a runway. It was nonstop helicopters. It's the same very often in Central Park, but I was especially astonished at the level of noise in Hudson River Park. Very little, if any, of this noise is necessary. Tourists and impatient rich people should not have the right to inflict this kind of stress and damage on others. Even news organizations don't need to hover for hours getting B-roll footage of a concert in the park. In fact, I ask the city council to do everything you can to prevent any nonessential police or medical emergency traffic anywhere in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Browdy. Next, we'll hear from Deborah Lepadua, followed by Elizabeth Chow, and then Ken Coughlin. Deborah, you may begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. Hello? Can I be heard?
Yep, yep, we hear you.
Okay, yes, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I've heard many speaking from Manhattan and Brooklyn. Well, I'm on the other end here in Queens by JFK Airport. JFK is almost a few steps from my place of residence of the Lindenwood Howard Beach area. Twenty-five years a resident here, it was a peaceful time. In these last six years or so, I would say, once I have the issue is with Blade and whatever air taxi services, they fly over my home, and my community is mostly single-family homes and six-level high-rise condominiums and co-ops, which I'm in a high-rise condo, six levels high. From 7:01 every morning until 11:00 PM at night, these helicopters fly lower and lower on bad windy days, rainy days, even snowy days, they come lower that I feel they're going to come right through the roof of my building. I have an eighty-five-year-old mother who is a stroke patient, had six heart attacks. This is impacting her well-being. She suffers daily headaches from this. I myself can't even think half the time. These helicopters, I'm on phone calls for work and all, and people are like, "Are you at the airport?" I'm like, "Pretty much." They need to cease this. I have reached out for these last several years to local officials, to my congressman, to my city council, who is new as of this year, and recently, I was told by her chief of staff, "It's a business. There's nothing we can do about it. You just have to tolerate it." No, we should not have to tolerate this type of behavior. I've sent videos showing birds flying in the path of these helicopters, and they're every two minutes going over our heads. They're over schools, they're over house of worship, there's a senior home just in the path. Something has to be done to cease it. Even going the waterways is not going to make a solution for this. I wish that someone would do a study here on my corner, by my home, to see the quality of life that's being destroyed here. Our health is being impacted here in many ways. I have veterans that live in my building, and speaking with one of them says, "I feel like I'm back at war." This is not fair to us for Blade, for their five-minute enjoyable lack of congestion, for $200 to fly over our homes needs to cease immediately. There should be no other solution but to cease them. And I feel sorry for those that are being exposed to the tourists also. So please, someone help us out here in Queens. No one is helping us out here.
Thank you, Mr. Lepadua. Next, we'll hear, next, we'll hear from Elizabeth Chow, followed by Ken Coughlin and Marie Timel. Ms. Chow, you may begin when the sergeants call the time.
Starting time.
Yes, thank you, council members, for holding today's hearing, and thank you to the Economic Development Council for their testimony on this important topic, and thank you for allowing me to testify. I'm a resident of Manhattan. I live on the Upper East Side, and I want to urge the city council to do everything it can to ban all nonessential helicopter traffic in the skies above New York City. This traffic is polluting in terms of air, noise, and adds a level of danger to our city that we can hardly tolerate in such a densely populated space. It's hard for me to measure the impact of this army of nonessential helicopters on the quality of air I breathe. It's likewise hard for me to predict when and where one of these accident-prone vehicles will fall from the sky and land on me or my children or my neighbors. But what I can know is the impact of the noise that these invaders make in our community. When I'm sitting in my apartment and hear helicopters flying by on their way to Central Park, my concentration and work efficacy are degraded. When I am taking a walk in Central Park, seeing a brief respite from the noise and chaos of the city, as so many New Yorkers do, the peace is shattered continuously and constantly by helicopters flying in from New Jersey, Long Island, other parts of New York City, and who knows where else, and hovering over the park for minutes and minutes on minutes on end. This increasing prevalence of nonessential helicopters has degraded the quality of life for all New Yorkers. Why? So that a very few wealthy tourists can have an exciting sightseeing experience, and so a few extremely wealthy residents of New York and its environs can get to the airport faster than the rest of us or get to their mansions in the Hamptons by flying over the heads of their fellow New Yorkers who have to suffer the noise and air pollution and hazardous conditions they create. This is clearly a situation that requires local government intervention to curb the excesses of these abusers and the helicopter operators who enable and profit from their selfish behavior. Please act now to ban all nonessential helicopter traffic in and around the skies of New York. New York can be a leader in this regard and set the example for other locales like New Jersey. And please engage soon and vigorously with other entities with which we must contend in this fight against the quality of life here in New York City. Engage with New Jersey, engage with the FAA. There's no reason that New York City residents should have to accept that helicopters coming across from New Jersey are ruining our lives here in Manhattan. Thank you very much for listening, and thank you for holding this hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Next, we'll hear from Ken Coughlin, followed by Marie Timel, and then Mark Bierman. Mr. Coughlin, you may begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Thank you, committee chairs Farias and Abreu for holding this important hearing, and thank you, Councilmember Brewer, for your years-long leadership on this issue. My name is Ken Coughlin, and I'm speaking on behalf of Manhattan Community Board Seven. Committee Board Seven encompasses the Upper West Side of Manhattan from 59th Street to 110th Streets. Over the last several years, our district has experienced an unprecedented surge in tourist and commuter helicopter flights, traveling up and down the Hudson River and across the district to and from points east. In city fiscal year 2022, helicopter noise was the top complaint to the 311 system in our community district, accounting for more than 10,000 complaints filed. In January 2020, our community board voted unanimously to support our elected officials' efforts to reduce helicopter traffic in the city, including federal legislation that would prohibit all nonessential, meaning tourist and commuter, helicopter flights within New York City airspace. One year later, also by unanimous vote, we called on the city to end its promotion of tourist and other nonessential helicopter flights on the website NYC and Company, which is the taxpayer-supported official destination marketing organization for the Five Boroughs. This promotion of helicopter flights subsequently ended. Manhattan Community Board Seven urges city agencies to end the excessive and harmful noise pollution, terrorism risks, and climate and environmental impacts of nonessential helicopter flights by completely eliminating them over New York City skies. Although we haven't yet taken a position on specific council legislation, we support closing New York City heliports to nonessential flights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coughlin. Next, we'll hear from Marie Timel, followed by Mark Bierman and Stephanie Meckett. Ms. Timel, you may begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Hello, I'm Marie Timel. I live on the Upper West Side of Manhattan. I've been involved in the helicopter matter for since 2012, attending city council meetings, testifying at town halls, attending rallies, and I'm sorry to say, we haven't had much progress. In fact, things are worse now. At each meeting, I ask this question, "How is this a democracy when the needs of the few outweigh the good of the many or the millions? How?" I live between two of the greatest parks in the world on the Upper West Side, Central Park and Hudson River Riverside Park. These parks are strafed continually by helicopter traffic. My block is a main route down my street to get to these parks. These parks are major destinations for helicopter traffic as far away as Boston and Philadelphia. They come to go over our reservoir and disturb the walkers there. Our parks were made for the people of New York to enjoy peace and solitude. How is it that we cannot have peace and solace in our parks? Noise is not just noise, it's also vibration. My experience is, I've been woken up at 6:00 AM and at midnight by low-flying, fast-traveling helicopters shaking in my bed from the vibration of these wildcatting joyriders. Call me OCD, but I've been tracking these machines for many years using the Flight, the Plane Finder app. You can see exactly what is in the air. I have hundreds, if not thousands, of screenshots of misbehaving aircraft. Nothing that the New York EDC testified to reflects my experience in observing these flights on the app. In fact, I'm very concerned. At Carolyn Maloney's town hall issue on the matter, I was told that helicopters were given the right to turn their transponders off in case investment bankers were being tracked to deal locations. You know what I'm finding now? Most of them don't have their transponders on. I can't take screenshots of their misbehavior anymore, and they're misbehaving worse than ever. Flying low, flying fast, doing whatever they want, nobody's watching them, and all I think about is 9/11 and terror from the air. Not to mention that these aircraft are inherently unstable, and in 2012, I provided a complete list of every helicopter class crash globally.
Time expired.
Thank you. I thank the members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Timel. Next is Mark Bierman, followed by Stephanie Meckett, and then we'll try one more time for Alexis Arkos Duntov after that. Mr. Bierman, you may begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Thank you. Thank you for holding this hearing, or members of the committee hearing meeting. I'm sorry, most have left already. But, and I'm going to abbreviate my remarks, because I know you've heard a lot of this, but a Sikorsky S92A helicopter, the same helicopter made for the military known as the Black Hawk, is modified for civilian use for nineteen passengers, thunders a few hundred feet directly over my apartment. I could feel my heart start to race, my blood pressure rise, my anxiety levels soar. The walls of my apartment literally shake and vibrate from the explosive ear-splitting sounds of the twin CT-7-8A, 2,520 horsepower engines, and beating 56-foot blades. According to the FAA noise studies, these helicopter sounds can exceed 100 decibels at that altitude, where hearing damage can occur at only over 80 decibels. In the past year, helicopters flying at extremely low altitudes have proliferated, crisscrossing my residential neighborhood, sometimes as often as once every five minutes. They begin as early as 5:00 AM and sometimes go until after midnight. It is unbearable, it is hellish, it is unsustainable. It is making residential neighborhoods throughout New York City in these flight paths unlivable. It is impacting the lives and health and well-being of hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers. It is subjecting infants and children to the perpetual deafening sounds of these helicopters. It is subjecting New Yorkers to the high levels of toxic jet fuel exhaust they emit. It makes it impossible to enjoy one's home and family time, to work at home, to study at home, to put children to sleep. A walk in the park is becoming like a walk along a jet airport landing strip or a military airbase. Our homes have become prisons of an inescapable, constant, extreme explosions of deafening noise, noise levels that have been shown to contribute to or exacerbate illness. Irresponsible and arrogant owners and boards of these helicopter companies have refused reasonable requests that they fly destination flights over the water, not residential neighborhoods. These operators and their boards have shown that they care nothing for New York's residents. Some operators and their board members apparently believe that their well-placed political connections afford them unbridled license to destroy our neighborhoods. That these operators are allowed to use publicly-owned facilities to make New York sound like a war zone is a travesty. It must stop, and it must stop now. And I just want to say that I understand that the West Side facility is, has, is subject to state control, and I think that the city council, in addition to shutting down these East Side facilities, really need to make a concerted effort to work with the governors office, the state senators and assembly members, the FAA, Chuck Schumer's office, and the EDC to shut down this West Side facility. It is making New York...
Time expired.
Well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bierman. Next, we'll hear from Stephanie Meckett, and then Alexis Arkos Duntov. And as a reminder, if you have signed up to testify and your name has not yet been called, please use the Zoom raise hand function on Zoom, or raise your hand if you are here in person. Ms. Meckett, you may begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Stephanie Meckett, are you here?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now.
Okay, great. Thank you for hosting this.
Thank you for hosting this meeting. I really appreciate it. My comments, first of all, I second everything that has been expressed so far. I wish to use my time to focus on two or three detailed points as follow-up to what I heard today. First of all, and this is somewhat more for city council than perhaps EDC, you know, something to think about. If the helicopters can zoom around the way they do under the guise or premise of economic development, then why is it that other major metropolitan cities of our size, Paris, London, et cetera, can somehow develop their economic prosperity without the city proper becoming a heliport? As if to say, economic development and the well-being of the residents are not mutually exclusive. And I would implore you all to think about that. As a corollary to that, if it's good enough for the Disney Corporation to, with all of their political and money connections, ban helicopters over all Disney properties, then by God, it's good enough for the 8 million residents of New York City. So that's one thing. Secondly, it literally made me sick to my stomach to hear that the fines are the mild rub on the wrist of a warning and then a $1,000 fine for major corporations that make millions of dollars? That's appalling. And it seems to me that the city council has the power to impose a bigger stick and a sharper stick for violators. I mean, I don't get a warning for a parking ticket. That's ridiculous. And it made me sick to my stomach. Thirdly, this 3-1 call-in charade, I second those who say, listen, I called in and then I stopped calling in because it was a joke. Here's the joke. You call in, the operators, they read off a list, it's very formulaic, okay? Then you're grilled, you know, a public citizen who like has a business to run and a life to lead, I'm grilled about the color and this or that, and I have to prove that it was a tourist helicopter. EDC does not follow up on those calls. I can personally testify to that fact. So I am encouraging the city council to step it up. The EDC is not doing their job in terms of follow-up, in terms of fines, in terms of a balance between economic development and the well-being of residents. And this, oh, and lastly, related to the 3-1-1 calls, less than 5% of complaints are regarding nonessential helicopters? That's nonsense. That's a false negative. You have folks like me who have a life. I'm not running around with apps and not... Okay, I think you get the idea.
We do, we do, we do. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. As we don't see any other hands raised or anyone here identifying that they have any more testimony, I will begin to close. I just want to state thank you to the public for showing up today and really giving us the largest perspective of what you are all dealing with. Oh, sorry. I just noticed in our virtual testimony Alexis Arkus Dantov, if you are ready to testify. You'll have to accept the unmute. And you can begin.
Starting time.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is not Alexis. My name is Lo Van der Valk. I'm president of Carnegie Hill Neighbors, a preservation and quality of life organization, membership organization in the Upper East Side. We border Central Park. And I can tell you that in the last six years, the problem of helicopter noise has accelerated. And, you know, we were in early touch with, some four years ago, with Councilmember Carolyn Maloney. And at that time, it was considered that a letter to the FAA would be appropriate, but it turned out that that was going nowhere. And that is when she drafted the legislation that we are all aware of and that has been joined by Jerry Nadler and Najal Lesquez and others. However, we know that it's very difficult to get any legislation through Congress at this time. We are concerned about the noise and the unfairness, of course. I don't want to say unfair, but it's not reasonable to allow the few to impose such hardships on the many. And, you know, Central Park is exemplar of the great parks of New York City. It was built to be a respite from city life. And now, now we have all these helicopters that are destroying that experience and that is multiplied all over the city. So we would support eliminating nonessential helicopters, that is tourism helicopters and commuter helicopters, if possible. And if other measures could be taken to go in that direction, we would be supportive of that. We thank this committee for refocusing on this matter. We hope this committee will continue to pursue this matter over the coming months and even years because we know things take time to accomplish. And so we just want to thank you. And I want to add one more thing. We thought at first that all these helicopters were coming from New Jersey and there was nothing we could do because it's another state. And now we learned that so many helicopters are originating in New York City and from these very heliports that we mentioned, that you are concerned with. So this may be a fruitful first avenue for you to pursue. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak and voice our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I will, oh, by the way, I will submit a written statement.
Wonderful. I love written statements. Thank you so much for your testimony and for being patient with us as we walked through, getting everyone heard today. With that, seeing no one else in the room and no one would have raised a hand online, I'd like to just say thank you again to everyone for testifying today. There is a lot more work that needs to be done and your testimony has brought a lot of that to light. I think this council is excited and engaged to see what we can work with the EDC on and how we can keep advocating for all of the concerns that were brought forward. So with that, I'd like to conclude this hearing and thank everyone again.